So I'm leading the order. Your corrections to the agenda.
Not on my part.
I'll make the motion.
All right, sorry.
I'll second.
All favor.
I.
I.
Approve the minutes of October twenty third.
Uh, should look at them all over. There'd be an order motion to approve that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Eric, general public concern. Nobody there. Ben, you're up.
Morning.
Morning, man.
Week feels quieter than some of the last ones.
So. But I hope you're right.
So the first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county's right of way uh for Midland Power. This is switching in overhead service to underground at thirty fifty five one hundred and ninetieth street. So this would be on the Lake Church Blacktop. Um, believe it's the Rasmussen place there just east of uh.
Remodeled.
Mm hmm.
Rebuild.
Yep, they're they're looking at switching that to an underground service.
Okay.
Order.
Yes.
No, make no.
Any discussion? All favorite.
Hi. Hi.
Oh. Eric.
The next item that I have is. Correct.
You're heading out, but twice not in my package.
Yes, I uh. And I was waiting for a couple of final numbers come in.
Was it worth it?
I'll let you be the judge. Um, so we ended up getting quotes from uh three different suppliers. Um. Don's Truck Sales reached out to me. They said that they do have the availability to purchase freight liners. Uh, instead of coming from truck centers, they would be coming from a supplier up in Minnesota. Um. Truck Center is quoting us Western Stars. They have the availability for those. And Reese has the Mac similar to the one that's sitting down there for us right now. Um. All three are relatively similar as far as the machines that we're looking at purchasing. Uh, the Mac truck does have a slightly larger engine with more horsepower uh and more torque. Um. And a little bit higher uh mileage on the warranty. Um. As far as when they'd be available, the the order date. Uh, if you were to purchase a freight liner, the order date would either be in the second or third quarter of next calendar year. Uh, the other two were the third or possibly fourth calendar or fourth quarter of next calendar year. So.
Got a question.
Sure.
What do you hit on warranty? The five years or the two hundred or two fifty miles? What hits first?
Uh, usually the years.
The years hit first.
Yeah.
Will there be a trade on? Will we get rid of one?
Uh, yeah, I don't know that it'll be a trade or if we'll just end up posting it for sale on like a a big iron or Purple Wave.
Uh huh.
Website. Uh, talking to Gene. Uh, they're interested in our trucks, whether we buy a truck from them or not. So he said, I know what kind of machinery we'd be getting from you. We've taken them on trades before. Even if you ended up purchasing a Mac, we'd still be interested in buying the trade in. So.
So when we did the conservation get one?
Conservation's got one. Uh, I know they had some issues with it off the bat. Um, I don't know if those have been all resolved. You know, before we would trade anything in, we'd talk to Todd.
That's why I thought, you know, I think you know, this is a good truck.
Right.
Right now.
Yeah.
So you got feeling on the freight liner? It's cheaper. The western star, there's a couple. I think is it Hamilton County has, I'm seeing them.
Uh, Sooth County runs a few of them. I believe Hamilton County's got a couple. Um, Blacktop Service is running the Western Stars. And then obviously the the Mac is uh local. I mean, they're the ones that we went with here last year when we needed a truck and couldn't find one from anybody else, you know, they stepped up and found one for us.
He's how? How much under this that one forty nine from what we paid for that last Mac?
Uh, three, it's three thousand dollars more than what we paid for the last.
Yeah.
Do you have one you're waiting on yet?
So we've got uh the Mac that we ordered is down in Fort Dodge right now. It's sitting at Reese waiting for Highway Truck to open up a stall. This was my concern when we went with Highway Truck for the snow equipment to begin with. And yeah, I need to rattle their chain, but I was told that all the equipment would be there in October to put on this truck, but talking to Reese last week, they still have the truck sitting there in their yard and it's been sitting there since August.
Wow. So truck delivery was good.
The the truck delivery was good. We were waiting. I know we were waiting on uh one of the hydraulic units. And uh uh, the control box that runs everything.
What's the equipment on besides Highway Truck?
Uh, the other one that we looked at was going straight to Henderson. Henderson was just slightly more, if I remember right.
Where they located.
For snow equipment. Uh, they're over by Manchester.
Mm hmm. They're known to be a little speedier.
Yeah, I mean, they're a full-size production company. I mean, they would have been more expeditious than Highway Truck, but the advantage of Highway Truck is
right here.
Yes, they're local.
Is it worth going the extra money to get the Mac with the heavier horsepower and?
That's the question for you guys.
What's the, do you need it? What? We're not driving it. You guys are, so.
Right.
Do do you need the extra horsepower and torque? And do it, will it last longer? Yeah. I mean, if you get another year out of it.
I think uh, you know, Bruce could probably attest to this more than I can, but majority of the older trucks that you see still running down the road.
Or Max.
Are Max.
There you have it.
Well, you look at.
Or Pete's.
You look at the how many uh concrete trucks? They're all Max because they run.
Yeah, what's the
It's twenty thousand, twenty five thousand.
Rough uh length of service for county trucks.
So the ones that we'd be looking at getting rid of would be uh two thousand sevens. So assuming and you know, if if we order them in July, reality, we're probably taking possession sometime in twenty twenty five. So you're getting almost twenty years out of the truck that you're trading. You're getting eighteen years out of the truck. So.
I mean, that.
If you look at that.
If you look at that, it's a thousand dollars a year to be able to drive a Mac and have local service.
And have more power and.
Yeah.
Run the Ford Dodge versus every time something happens.
Because I've, I don't, Ben, I've heard this probably from you and probably some English woman. Uh, there's fur- further off. Uh, I don't know where some of these other outfits are out of uh Clear Lake.
Clear Lake and Fairbanks.
You're you're going there. Have your frame, have your everything problem. Kind of the reason you stuck with the
I mean.
Slow pole Highway Truck people for the equipment.
Right.
It is local.
Yeah.
Mac is local. The longevity, yeah, you're talking.
And maybe.
Sixteen to eighteen to twenty.
Eighteen years from now, you're maybe not looking at trading off the Mac because she's still
Still running.
Running like a top.
Maybe make it twenty years.
Twenty five.
Uh huh.
Who knows? Yeah.
How many backs are in our service fleet right now?
So.
One waiting.
We have one sitting in.
You're waiting on the first one. You're waiting on the first one.
Yes. Yep, we've got uh two Sterling's remaining. Those are the uh the two two thousand sevens. The remainder are freight liners. So. Uh, plan is when uh the first Mac comes in, uh truck number, I believe is fifty five, fifty five gets switched over to a full-time water truck. And we take delivery of this one, fifty five goes down the road, fifty six turns into our water truck. So we'd still be sitting on one.
One Sterling.
One Sterling.
As a water truck.
As a water truck. Yeah. So.
I think it's a no pretty much no-brainer for the longevity and the length of time these are kept. And uh the extra features and the locality of going with the Mac. Is that that differential is?
If you break it down over twenty years, it it's not much.
Um, so would we be forced to go to Highway Truck or we just get the chassis from Reese, right?
We're getting the chassis from Reese. Uh once we decide on where we're going to be getting our truck, I can reach out to um Henderson, Highway Truck, and even Don's. I mean, Don's will put on snow equipment as well. You know, and get pricing from all of them.
So. So. I mean, that's about time you have that snow equipment on the truck.
Yeah. Yeah, I need to, like I said, I need to get on them and get that machine into their bay working on it. So.
I'll make a motion for the purchase of the Mac.
I'm ready. Second that moving forward. And a motion to second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hold. Eric.
Um, beyond that, I know I'd I'd talked to Rick a couple of times last week on uh uh this building in Dakota City and doing some specifications for that. I've got a copy here. Um. Rick, if you want to look through it, the main thing on there, there is uh a couple of dates that'll have to be selected as far as when you guys want instead of bid letting uh what you guys want for a completion date for the building. Um, there might be one or two uh smaller specifications in there. I know at one time we talked about just having a single service instead of having all those individual ones to do in a single.
Yeah.
Like a service.
I mean, it all gets billed as a county.
Right. And then the question becomes, do you you split off that single service to individual smaller fuse panels in those three bays so that if you blow a breaker?
It doesn't shut someone else's off.
You don't, yeah, exactly. So if you blow a breaker, you don't have to try and get access to law enforcement's ability to be able to trip the breaker back on. But beyond that, I think I got most everything else ironed out. Um, if you want to look through that and just let me know here uh in the next week or so, we can set a bid letting date for that. Uh, last week we closed Quebec Avenue north of Highway Three for a couple of miles. We were. No, go ahead. Um. We were in the process of cutting out uh potholes and rumble strips on a two-mile stretch, and I think it was Thursday that it rained a bunch. We got caught with about two miles of that roadway scratched and opened up.
Oh.
One.
mushy.
Yeah, when it it dumped three quarters of an inch in about a half an hour. So we did our best to try and cover the road back up. And it just, it got sloppy, so we closed it. Uh, plan is to open it back up today, so.
Did you get done with what you were working on?
Yeah, everything, everything got cut and and scratched that they had wanted to.
It's dry enough to open it back up.
Should be. Yeah.
Wouldn't be soft underneath and all that.
Uh, Dave drove it yesterday because he had to go pick up his dog. Uh, and he said that the road was fine. Uh, Trish drove it. I guess how this was all right this morning.
Well.
Yeah. Um. Up there on uh Kevin Tolliers Road, Kentucky Avenue, just off of one sixty nine. We closed that uh tail end of week before last. Contractor moved in on Monday. Uh, the bridge is out. The barrels all set and half of the west end section is set, so they should finish setting that probably tomorrow. And then they'll start backfilling and bringing in rip rap. So I think by the end of the week, we'll have that open back up to traffic.
Yeah, that's quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice. Did they ever get Lone Tree seeded?
Uh, Lone Tree got seeded Wednesday afternoon. Um, perfect. From the looks of things, there's plenty of straw thrown out everywhere. But uh.
There's a lot of open dirt there that they don't want washed.
Yeah, yeah. No, they got that done on on Wednesday, so I'll have a pay voucher uh next week.
It'll take your time.
To to pay them for for that remaining, and then that'll be that'll be everything but the final voucher. Should be covered on that one. Um. We are regrading a one-mile stretch of one hundred and ninetieth. Uh, just south of Hardy off the Blacktop. Um. Same as what we've been doing all summer. The dishes were level full, so we're pulling that up onto the road. I've got one guy over in Wright County right now uh doing the motor rider operator training.
Oh, because they're going through it.
They're going through it over there. They had availability for one spot, so I sent one of my operators over there. Um, so he'll be over there all week. Uh, and one.
Send a machine or they?
We sent a machine too. Yeah, we took the machine over Friday after lunch. And then he'll operate that all week. And what he's doing is he's learning how to uh maintain ditches, pull in the road ditch, rebuild roadways, blade it out in the field. Uh, it's the same one that we had Brian Jackson here teaching all the guys two seasons ago.
Is that the same as Brian teaching that class over there too?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So that's being done.
I tell you, I've heard nothing but good comments about that whole program. I mean, bringing these.
He, I mean, he uh he showed the guys a lot of possibilities, what they can do with machinery that we already have. Um, I know Eric's seen the one that we did up on Kentucky Avenue here with boat shop. Uh, it looks really nice, so um what these guys are doing is bringing the roadway back to the way it was eighty years ago. Hundred years ago when it was first graded.
And it's also extremely
Efficient.
Efficient and cost-effective just to clean a right of way. If the road ways all right, just lay it into the field. This time of year, you know, we're talking about that for years. It's over. It's three to four times quicker.
Yeah, so we've got a one-mile stretch over on Juniper, just south of the Chantlin Blacktop, where we're blading that out into the field.
Mm hmm.
So.
It's it's exponentially quicker.
Usually you can do that in about, you can do a a one-mile stretch in about two days versus two, two and a half weeks of digging.
Yeah, it's just unbelievable.
And it's less manpower.
Yeah.
So.
That I've seen that in in practice and in where they've done it, and it's been terrific.
Yeah. Beyond that, that's all I have.
Anything for. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Cole, you're up. Man, I gotta catch you outside.
All right. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
I got a couple more maps for you guys. I this this should be the only thing we don't have already in our packet. But I figured it'd help as we talk about this this morning.
But when you were here, you had your finger in it.
Yeah, I cut my finger. I cut part of the tip off of the mandolin slicer, so I don't recommend that.
No, no.
Anybody want a bigger copy of the plat either? Good, okay, all right. So I'll start with kind of an overview of the location. I think that'll help as we move forward. So the map you have in front of you, the red is the area we annexed last November. So the part just to the east, that big square parcel, and then the pieces to the south of it outside of the cemetery are still in county territory. They're not in our corporate limits. So the plaque covers everything except for that homestead there. So the three square parcels and the smaller one to the south, uh but not the homestead. So it's kind of unique when you get a subdivision in inside corporate limits and outside. So we, I pulled up state code and our subdivision ordinance, and we're allowed to uh subdivide or have the authority up to two miles outside of corporate limits. So uh, the county also has that right to review it since it's in their territory. Um, but in talking with Randy, you guys don't have any subdivision regulations. So I sent yours. That's the process we follow, but typically in a subdivision regulation, it has the process spelled out. It has public improvement spelled out. Lot sizes, all of that stuff. So really just to simplify everything, I'm asking for a waiver today uh for waiving your review of both the preliminary and final plat, which comes after the preliminary. Just for simplicity sake, since you guys don't have any regulations on the book. Um, we don't know what the process would be, and I don't know what that would look like, but to me, made the most sense to go ahead and waive that. Everything would fall under the city's process. It'd be streamlined that way. And I think that would work the smoothest for everybody, but um, this is for the Three Rivers Industrial Park, so it's all owned by H C D A. They're the applicant in this case. Um, and we're hoping for good bids on the infrastructure on Thursday, so. But I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
So. I was just gonna say so ob- obviously the red is what is annexed.
Yes.
Are you asking that as this moves forward to great subdivisions, that that's where the we're waving, so that doesn't have to be reviewed in the?
It would be the, it'd be the entire piece. So it'd be our annex areas and the two parcels in your jurisdiction. It would be tho- those two as well.
And that would only be if there's subdivision activity or whatever.
And there, and there is with this one.
Okay.
Yep, so we're doing four developable lots and then four outlots. Um, and then I guess there's lot six for the cemetery that'll get deeded over. Um, so yeah, it it governs both our portion and your portion.
Okay. As far as subdivisions and such go.
Yes.
And then you send all the information that states your procedural work.
Correct.
With that on the city side.
Correct.
Now, then that would just fall into the non-annex part as well.
Correct. Yeah.
So the red part is annexed.
Yes.
Into the city.
Correct.
What's the, you're getting a waiver from is this?
Correct.
Yep. And you own that.
H C D A owns it. City does not own it.
Okay, that's right. Okay. So you're asking a waiver from the county that they don't have to review the surveys or the plans.
Correct.
Yep. Subdivision.
Right.
And just on this area.
Correct.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Seems to make sense to me. I mean, I don't see why, because the county doesn't have subdivision.
Right.
Ordinances and that.
Right.
Does the cemetery have the option to buy any of that to the north?
So.
They got that one little piece.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they're going to be landlord.
Yeah. So we're we're deeding or H C D A is deeding lot six over as soon as the final plat is done. So when we worked with our cemetery guys, that would with the rooms that that's there, plus those two acres, it'd buy us like a hundred years.
That's what I wondered just.
Yep.
They were taking that in North Town.
Yeah. Yep.
I mean, in a hundred years, I don't plan on being here.
Hopefully somebody's still around.
Somebody who's still burying people and they.
Yep.
Otherwise, they'll be landlord.
Right. Yeah, that was the idea is H C D A was willing to uh dedicate that to the city for extra cemetery room.
They'd, that'd be a lot more area we'd have to walk.
You're right.
More flags for them. But you remember a hundred years, Bruce?
I know. Well, one of us is going to be pushing the other one. And I'm guessing I'm walking. Well, I guess I don't.
I think it makes sense to me. I mean, it just uh kind of a technicality, and it probably takes a lot of heavy talk about.
Yeah.
Some streamlines it.
Yeah. For your ability to do that.
Yep, and one of the requirements in our ordinance is that we give you guys and the county engineer everything. And so if there are ever any questions during the process, you know, let us know. Um, you guys will have everything that we're looking at, so I'll send that package over when it goes to P and Z two.
I've heard the rumor that everybody in the state that owns dirt is bidding this project, so you should get an awesome bid.
So our engineer had said as of Friday, we have sixty-five plan holders.
Wow.
It's insane.
I mean, but also it's a little scary that people are that hungry towards.
Right. Yeah. Hoping for good bids on Thursday. Yeah.
That's what, that's what I heard. Everybody is beating the door down on this one.
Yeah.
So that should turn out good for you.
Well, I would make the motion of the approval of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one.
I'll second.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Oh, is that a roll call on resolution?
Don't wanna. Appreciate that. As you move forward, you send that to the engineer.
Yeah.
I'm guessing he may give the copy to Randy for his zoning.
Sure. Yeah, one thing I'll make clear too, all the zoning components in your territory still stay that way.
Right.
This is literally just for splitting the lot. So you know, whenever that develops, uh we'll be working with or the applicant or developer, whoever will be working with Randy on that too.
And it just raises it up so that you you got more control over it. So.
For the subdivision, right.
You have a decision. You don't have to go back and pull it back.
Sure.
So just for clarification for the public, you're taking bids to basically run water and stuff out into these lots for future development.
Right, yep, it'd be uh water sewer, storm sewer, and then street. And significant grading.
Ryan was talking. Building out there in the north end, they'd have the ability to buy a lot.
Right, yep, you'd contact H C D A for that. Yep.
Shape the lots, make the paths, dirt, dirt or streets or sewer.
Yeah, the city's goal for the infrastructure is to have it shovel-ready, so it should be really attractive for H C D A to sell and develop.
When someone's looking for something, they can take them out there as opposed to, well, this is the plot. We haven't done anything to it here.
Yeah, you got, you got to have it ready. If you're going to get businesses, they want they don't want to say, oh, oh, two years from now, we'll have it ready for you.
Correct, yeah. So the infrastructure piece will be a long project. We think it'll take most of next year, and then there's a paving option for twenty twenty-five, so. Yeah, that felt like it was the best uh option for development was just to get this done.
All right, well.
If anybody did a copy, it won't sign.
Um, that'd be great. Yeah, or you can email it to me, or I can stop by later, whatever's easiest for you guys.
Yeah, if it, no one usually reads code language, but if you, if you do, it holds spell out. But yeah, that it'd be in the sense that the county receives copies and permission. So it's, yeah, it's not superseding, and then it's just making it more streamlined.
Right.
Subdivision part of.
Perfect.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Cole.
Hey, I'll thank you.
Appreciate it.
Make sure it's sending you the copy. Okay, moving on down. We were appointing very and line direct deputy and Shana as a payroll deputy. Twenty-five and three an hour.
Um. Currently, Terry is
Completing claims and range. And we do not have. New deputies in our office, and I suggest raising her wage. To the same thing as. Shauna, making them both deputies. As we've had in the past.
So neither one of them is a deputy of anything right now? So what are their current wages?
Twenty-three or. Shauna's is twenty-five ninety-three.
Without being a deputy?
Correct. So it's just giving the title and then raising Terry's. Because of her extra duties.
And Terry is at what wage now?
She's at twenty. Twenty-three oh five.
Trish, once they become deputy, does that mean that they get a percentage then of what your wage is? Isn't that how it works?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pretty much simplifies the whole process and. I mean, it's not set in stone. You can always change it. To less, but not more.
Okay.
So it's basically giving Shauna a title at her current wage, and then she'll then carry. The title and the wage that goes along with.
Yep.
And they've both. Been very good to work with. Um, everybody enjoys working with them.
Including you? Yeah, that's so good.
I mean, in different offices and everything, they've done good.
And along the along with the title comes the responsibility of being able to run the office in your absence, which is. Your responsibility to make sure they can do that.
Correct.
Are they both all, what do you call that, cross-trained? For with everything?
I mean, as much as you can. Because the claims and the payroll kind of fall near the same times.
Okay.
So then we'll. Soon be putting out an ad for the drainage?
Yes. For clerk. And I do have that ready. I. Need to get it on the website and send it to the paper today.
Okay.
Well, I'd make a motion that we do approve appointing Terry Chukabine. As a claims deputy. Now with bumper wage twenty-five ninety-three. Shauna's is already at that, but we will put her as the payroll deputy along with that.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul, Carrie's. Okay. Well, go in closed session or you want to do committee committee reports and then go into closed session?
Why don't we do committee reports and then I can call in for the closed session?
Yeah, waiting for someone on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd take many reports. All right, committee reports. Uh, this past Monday, the twenty-third, I had a building families meeting via Zoom. Cause there wasn't much going on, so we held it via Zoom on Monday afternoon. And that was my one official activity to correct the meeting.
Okay, uh, Wednesday morning, I was up in Spencer. For the I D B A quarterly meeting, I guess it's called. And uh. We discussed our meeting, you know, coming up. Uh, December first and four Dodge. Um, and then we also talked about um. The pipeline, just going through some of the counties that I D B A represents. Some of the issues they have with that, which is. Nobody's really thrilled with pipeline, CO2 pipelines, and except for the governor, she seems to be really pushing it hard.
Yeah.
One company, Paul?
Yeah, they do.
And the other uh is like two years away from.
Being summit.
Summit, yeah.
And you know, if they get it through, then they'll have monopoly on it. And then basically they got the ethanol industry under their thumb, so. I don't know if it's a benefit at all.
Yeah.
It's just a get rich quick scheme for somebody and. Um. We're pretty much opposed to that.
Yep. Well, they're they're all gonna make it on subsidies, just like everything else.
I don't know.
But you speaking of that, and you mentioned your district. Rating, yeah, uh, that'll probably be a topic at the.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, it'll.
It'll be a big topic.
We'll have a about an hour dug strike for questions and answers.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll be a hot topic up there because the. The water, the amount of water this thing requires is huge.
Mm-hmm.
And everybody concerned about water. These days, because it's in drought. Uh, one thing, unfortunately, through the paper. Um, we also discuss their last year in the legislature, they tried to change the drainage code. Where they don't have to publicize. Everything in the paper. Because some counties have to go to three papers, because they have three papers in their counties, and it gets very expensive. For information that everybody gets mailed anyway. And there are one dependent on a. A website where you can access it. You know, through the internet. If you wanna know what your neighbors pay you without having to go to your courthouse. Ask them, you can do it. Sorry. That's on the on the. Topic this year. And that's about it. So. The newspaper lobbyists are fighting that one, which I don't blame because it's a huge.
That would have. That would have to be a legislative item.
It is.
This next session would.
Yeah, it's on our it's on our list of legislative topics.
Yeah.
Yep.
And also, we talked about. A couple of counties. We lost a couple of counties, and we really don't know why they pulled out. Um, mainly because we did a lot of benefit for them. But I suppose they they got what they wanted and then they left, you know, they took our. Uh, copied our uh pipeline. Ordinance saying and left.
Kind of ungrateful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess also our drainage court meeting was a good success. We heard back from most everybody there. They all thought it was really good and great. Continue that next year.
Good.
So. Okay, that's about it for me.
All right, Tuesday night, I had the U D M O, um, I went to Fort Dodge for that. Um. Nothing new other than. Most of the funds that they've been requesting have started coming in, so they're. Uh, able to. Continue with a lot of their programs, which. Sure will make a lot of people happy. Thursday night, I had uh CFR. Um, Zoom. Um. Not a whole lot. Going on there other than. Um, trying to help people with drug and alcohol issues. And then Friday morning, I uh. Jumped in with Rick Rasmussen and Clarion and rode from. Clarion over to Eldor for the Central Iowa Juvenile Detention Meeting. I figured I'd. Use his gas. He was gone and I was. Parked my semi in Clarion and. We thought there was going to be some uh. Discussion on um some of the. Charges that uh. Billing, and it actually ended up being pretty much uh. Unanimous decision that the the. If a kid is sent down there, then the the billing will be sent back to the auditor. So then the auditor is. In you handle a lot of the. Dispersing of who gets paid. Um, you will get it to the juvenile people. So that, you know, they're the ones that sent the kid there. We don't have any idea when somebody goes. And that was the some of the county said, well, our auditor does know a thing when someone or none of us do. When they ask us questions, it isn't like we get a phone call and say. So-and-so has been sent to Eldor. And but the money, when the bill comes and it is, uh, because we've had several that haven't been paid for months. And uh, they're trying to figure out a better way, yeah. The discussion is the the scale as to, you know. There's a certain fee as we're members, we pay a certain fee, but if the kid is a little. Whatever you wanna classify him, they're not being very cooperative, then the rate goes up. There's three different tiers. And if they're on the tier one, that they are. Getting charged, um, it can ca- it can cost a lot of money. So some of these counties are saying, you know, how can you? Then they send us a bill. We don't know how. We don't have any idea. Well. That's what's caused all the discussion, so. Long story short, they they decided they're gonna continue to send the bills to the auditor. If you have any questions, reach out to them, make them. But. When you get the bill, I would highly recommend we take a. Copy of the of the. Uh, envelope so that we know it was mailed from Eldora on Friday. We got it on Tuesday. The dates, then we send it to juvenile. Court or whoever we send it to, and we gotta track that because if it. Goes down to somebody's desk and gets thrown on there, and three months later, they call us and say, well, we haven't still haven't been paid.
And we got proof that.
We got approved that we sent it down the the chain, so. Is there's. One county that's like uh. Almost two years they've been. Trying to chase them down for, but they didn't, they said they didn't get the bill, so anyway. It was a. Interesting meeting. And I'm about ready to pass the baton off to the assistant. I think you should come down at least for a meeting because the. Just the to hear the. The interaction, because there's a lot of counties that are the same.
They get kind of heated.
Yeah, there's there's some good discussion, um, but you know, some of them bills.
They're huge.
Uh. I don't know how they pay them. I don't know what we do. So.
It's a make a dump truck with cheap.
Yeah, it'd make you have.
Wow.
You could probably buy one.
Wow.
Is it. County ultimately responsible for.
County is.
All of it.
He is. That's the sad.
There's no.
There's no going back on the parent.
No rest.
No restitution.
So they, and the bill is coming from.
Central Iowa Juvenile Detention.
Central Iowa Juvenile Detention, and there's no other help from any other entity.
Well, they they sent it to the juvenile courts, and then then that's how they track it when the juvenile court. Sends somebody down there. They say, well, on Thursday, this kid went from Humboldt to Eldor. But some of these days, some of these kids have been down there for months.
Oh. Hey, Bruce.
Yep.
Um, I just thought of this. If somebody has mental health issues, can it go back to the regions? And the regions can pay some of that off then?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, good, because they're responsible for children's mental health, and if that's some of the things, and they should pick up some of that.
And that was the other thing that we've been talking about was some of that. You know, um, some of those charges have been um put on there that so-and-so was getting. Um, counseling. Okay, then the first thing the county asked is who's counseling them and what's their qualifications?
Right.
Well, they're just they're what they work here at law, but they don't work. And they don't have the credentials. You can't charge. Somebody for mental counseling.
Yep.
Unless you have the paper on the wall that says you qualified that. So it's been. Some of those meetings that we thought would be done in an hour and one on three were still arguing.
Wow.
So, yeah. And that was the other thing that uh. Um, Thursday night, um, with some of the uh counseling. Um, CFR is working with some of that also, Sandy.
Okay, good.
We can talk later.
Okay, great.
That's all I had.
Okay, speaking of ment. Speaking of mental health, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, I had a Zoom for our Rolling Hills Mental Health um meeting. And again, nothing really new to report. We just kind of were going through old business.
Anything else?
No, I'm sorry. No- nothing else. That was it.
Okay. Uh, Thursday, I met with Randy and. John upstairs. Discuss uh. Claire, get a clarification on a. Problem with the Board of Adjustment, so. It's, you know, meeting I really had. Okay.
Yeah, Paul, do you have something for our furnace or?
Yes.
Or, all right. I didn't know if you got any information on. Yeah, we had a leak upstairs. Um. Midstates was here. We repaired the leak, but there's still a very, very, very slow grip. Where it comes out of where the pneumatic valve is attached. So they're they've got to come back and work on more than one in a little bit, so we'll have them check that then. Um. I got it. More than one. Run up to five PSI. Eventually, it takes a while to warm the building up, and then it'll run up to five PSI. It'll shut down, drop back down, but it's doing this. Both of them do the same thing. They go down to zero, they start right back up. They go to five PSI. Drop to zero, come right back up. So it's a matter of you manually, when it gets too warm in the building, you go down. When it starts to get cold, we can. thermostat thing will work. That will help a lot of that. But we'll we don't know.
I was gonna say, at least you don't have to trouble scoring.
One thing we talked about. The. Annual Iowa Running District Association is first, and they want to. Things in it. We're gonna ask Sandy about. She was going.
She's gonna call.
She's gonna call. All right. And then, cause you said you could register who's ever going.
Yeah.
So we don't miss that, because I don't.
And he'll be going down, do you think, or just Terry?
I don't know.
Probably should.
It's. Okay, it's really good information.
I really think you should because you're gonna have to be helping the new.
Yeah.
Think you should both.
As well as Terry.
You got time.
Yeah.
I think you should both. You should both go because she'll be trading someone as well. She's learned a lot. She doesn't know everything yet. For both, that would help. I agree with her.
When it comes strange, you never know where.
The other thing I would. Say is uh with farmers out in the field, it's been quite a while since we've had any rain, so if you see. Any uh suck holes that our tile are making, please. Call. So that we can get someone. Get them fixed before they get too much. Too big a holes.
Yeah.
And it's like I said, it's been a couple.
Yeah.
Trips around the calendar before we've had.
Yeah.
That much moisture, and it's nice to get a little rain, so.
Right, a little mud on the road, so be careful.
And farmers, if you do, got the cleaner tools out on the road. Get your skid loader out and scrape it off.
Help us.
Yeah, or call the county and we'll take care of it.
Okay. Moving on. And then we go to closed session.
Okay, Trish, do you want me to call the um auditor's number?
Um.
Or.
Oh, so beans are still on. Are you gonna go to the thing on December first?
Drainage?
The drainage thing on Friday first.
And Fort Dodge.
That's my last day of on duty.
Oh, okay. All right.
All right.
Yep, I'm done. That's my last day.
Okay, well. I guess I'll make the motion to go into closed session session for trial code twenty-one dash five. Section one, we'll evaluate the professional competency of an individual.
I'll second that. Okay.
Do you want me to call the sale of the auditor's office?
We need a roll call vote from your first.
Just call one of our cell.